... Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
... United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick comments. This morning was the staff meeting, the opening day staff meeting. And I had the pleasure of attending, I guess I could say, sure. It is an amazing staff. If none of you have ever had the opportunity to see all the teachers and staff together, I harraged you to do it. It's impressive. This is a going enterprise, I guess you could say. I think everyone seemed to be in good spirits. Not looking forward to the hot weather coming later this week, but hopefully it'll be a great year. It was a great kickoff to the year. I also wanted to offer Jen's apology for missing tonight's meeting. She has another board responsibility, so won't be able to, wasn't able to join us tonight. We aren't going to talk about the schedule. Maybe we'll do that under new business. I don't think we have the completed meeting schedule with us tonight, but I did want to at least have some board discussion about what our schedule is going to be for the next few months. Okay, that's it from me. Item 4.0, we have minutes from the June 18th meeting and the June 28th meeting. Do you want to put them together? Okay. Any comments or actions? A motion by Allen, second by Rue, all in favor of accepting this. Any opposed? No? Thank you. Adjustments to the schedule.
Yeah, we have two field trips that we'd like to add to the agenda. I think you have our copies at your table. It's just the timing of it. So one is Maria Morris at the high school going to Pine Tree Camp, and then Bath Middle School, grade seven, going to Ferry Beach Ecology School. So I don't know if you want to put those under new business under 10.2. We have one, do you want to take all three along at that time?
Why don't we add them all as 10.2?
And then the only other one is if we can remove 9.1, the second reading of eligibility policy, just that high school administration feels it would take a little bit more time with that. So probably we'll come back to you at the September meeting.
Okay.
And I'll just add Katie on her superintendent's report. She was going to do a kind of summary.
Yeah, it's just short.
Okay, thank you. We have our first public session, so these are comments that are directed to things on the agenda. Any public comment at this point?
I would just like to re-
Could you use the mic, please? And just give us your name.
Andrea. Andrea Becher. I just wanted to request that notification and locations of the meetings are on app. I had to dig through the website to find it, and I think there's a app for that reason. And I've only known meetings to be at the middle school. I didn't know that they were on the locations, so...
Yeah, we rotate. We try to hit every school.
And they're usually there.
And usually do that at the beginning of the year, so...
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a reason why there's on RSC-1 app, right? It's not even on the app, so...
There is a reason for the RSC-1 app.
Yeah, would be great for notifications to be on there. Yeah, thank you.
It is on our website?
It is. It's under Board.
Under the Board meetings and... Right, but I mean...
And it's also on the district wide count.
It's not on the Facebook page or the app.
We have notification out. I mean, we're required under law to get public notification, and we do meet that obligation. We'll try to cover as many social media sites as we can, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments? No? Any other comments at this point? 7.0 committee reports. Patrick?
High school building project. As you can tell, I sent you guys a picture. It's up on our website. Crocker has done a great job clearing, and it will begin last thing at noon tomorrow. It was a little delayed in the permit, but it will begin that tomorrow, and everything is on schedule right now.
I mean, they don't want you to drive up through the site, clearly, because of the construction going on. But we will hopefully do periodic drone over flights so you get a sense of what's going on.
You can pretty much see what's going on from the office, from the administrative room. It's definitely up. Remember, you can see it on room one.
Yeah, and you can, like, drive in past, like, the turf fields to concede it, so...
It's going to be pretty dramatic once they start blasting and hauling the eke, the crushed rock out. Item 8.0, superintendent's report.
Yeah, I'll be brief, because Katie's going to do something here, but just wanted to mention Set the Success that happened on August 19th. Every pre-K of 12 students had an opportunity to get free school supplies, haircuts, visit other organizations, community providers. And it was just a great way for the community to come together. We had a lot of staff, a lot of volunteers that came together that day. And for students that did not receive supplies that day, they're back at the schools that students and families can pick up. So thank you to Jamie Door, NICO's Community Alliance. It was a great, great day. Anita was there as a volunteer, and so it just was a great way to bring the community together. So opening day, we speak today this morning. We have close to 300 employees in June, and then we have PD Day today, as well as tomorrow, before we start with students on Wednesday. Last thing is the Alice Training, which is a first responder safety training. And as you know, we train people the last day of school last year in grades six through 12. You know, it can be sensitive, it can be emotional, and it's not something that we want to train our staff on, but in this day and age, we need to. And so we will be continuing to talk about that training, six through 12, for our staff, how we introduce it to students, and then also how we have community meetings with parents to let them know. So we will create a schedule with the help of Chief Mike Field and also Chuck Reese, our school resource officer, very soon.
So you say you're going to do six through 12, or are you going to do the other grades?
I think we need to focus on six through 12 first and make sure that we get that ball rolling, that we're comfortable with our facilities. We've got some kinks to work out, and we need to practice some drills, educate people. So I think maybe at the end of the year, we might do something similar, where we train pre-K to five, and then we'll get to next year, again, getting organized.
Any first and questions for Patrick? Katie?
Is that it? Okay. So you all have in front of you a document entitled the PDL Vision for the District. And I just wanted to update you on where things stand with the legislature and where things stand in our district with proficiency-based diplomas. So where we last left off, the legislature had decided not to vote on the bill about whether to make proficiency-based diplomas optional or whether to decide to push them back for another year. When they came back in July, they did choose to vote to make this all optional, which means that you have two choices as a district. They are going to create, they being the main Department of Education, more detailed rules around what a proficiency-based diploma transcript would look like and what it would mean for students. So you can either opt in to those rules and the layout of the bill that they've pushed forward. That's not coming out until January. Or you can opt into the old credit system, which is, you know, rather than passing standards to graduate, you need to just take a certain number of classes and get a certain number of credits, much like most of us were used to and experience. And actually, that's what our upperclassmen right now are still experiencing. While we are very excited about the work we've done with proficiency-based learning, what the administrative team and our retreat all got together to talk about is, and actually, what it seems like most districts are doing is choosing the credit option, but continuing with the work that we've already done on proficiency. Because choosing the proficiency option from the main Department of Education means having to wait till January and having to follow all the detailed rules that they come up with with very little flexibility for what we feel is best for students. So I'm just going to read the top statement, if that's okay with everybody, so we're all on the same page, because it basically states how the administrative team feels about this choice. And then we'll quickly talk about the three things that fall below. With the change in state law from a once-required to now optional proficiency-based learning diploma, the RSC-1 administrative team sees this as an exciting opportunity to solidify and communicate our beliefs around what makes excellent teaching and learning. It allows us to maintain the components of the older requirements that benefit students and teachers and shed those that we do not and never did support. Therefore, given this leeway to customize our approach, we will not be moving to adopt the main Department of Education's new PDL requirements. Rather, we choose to continue to approve our current RSC-1 systems based on the low vision and practices related to teaching and learning in order to do what is in the best interest of all of our students. So hopefully that's clear. What falls below, and this is going to kind of be a two-part presentation, because I want to give you all time as the board to think about it, are three vision statements. Those are the ones that are in gray. There's one on the back. And those are kind of the larger beliefs that our administrative team, when we got together, felt like we were already doing and felt were still important for continuing our work. The bullet points that fall below in each of those boxes are the systems and practices that help us carry out that vision in all of our schools. And so essentially, I would love for you to take this, to sort of digest it and read it, and then at the next meeting, we'll follow up with more questions. But if I were to summarize this document, and we're going over this with all the teachers as well, I should say, the first group I shared it with today, and actually, the only group so far, the rest will be tomorrow, was the high school. And there were very few questions or comments, which is a very good sign from that group. It means that they agree, that they think that this is the right course of action. So if I were to sort of summarize it, it's all the work we've done with proficiency-based learning so far has improved our teaching, has improved teachers' understanding what it is they're carrying out in their classes, making better assessments, making students have more project-based learning, and they want to continue with all that. It's better for students. It gets them doing more of that exciting work that really keeps students on task, and so we want to continue with all of that. What we don't want to change and have it so far is we want to keep the 0 to 100 system at the high school. We want to keep the old transcript at the high school. That's why we hadn't changed it so far. We want to make sure our students with individualized education plans are supported. And there was some question about that with the new requirements, as to what that would look like. And so really, just to be brief, we're already doing great work, and we want to keep on this path without changing very much of what we're doing at all. And so based on that, Eric, Marty, and I will update the graduation policy and need to get it back to you, because right now it represents the old law, and so there are just some small tweaks that we're going to need to change. Okay? Any questions now? I know I want to give you time to kind of read this over, and we'll come back to it next month.
Will there be, like, drastic changes in the graduation policy?
No.
Okay. That would maybe for me.
Yeah. No. And everything, well, essentially, for all upperclassmen, stay exactly the same, but it's written, one way for upperclassmen right now and one way for lowerclassmen, to make sure that we're following the old law that's no longer relevant, essentially.
Is there a affirmative opt-in or opt-out requirement?
You know, they haven't actually shared that yet. I don't know if we're going to have to send in some sort of form or paperwork, or if it's just up to districts. Patrick, have you heard that yet? So if there is, it has not been shared yet.
And just on a very practical level, I mean, you made, when Jay Pinkerton was principal not that long ago, he made some very persuasive arguments in favor, you know, in support of the proficiency-based process, common process in this community.
And everything that he shared, we're still going to keep doing. None of that will change.
So what, in effect, is not being implemented is the change to the rating of the diploma?
Correct. And there were a couple of other little things, like the guiding principles. So there's a requirement around that. That's like being a good citizen, being, I can't remember all the terminology, being, going learner, and there was a possibility of having to have a digital portfolio for that. And that was something that we figured out how to do that within our classes without sort of the extra step that the state was requiring in high school students. And so that's something that's a nice change that we're not bound to anymore. We can do the part that we liked and believed in and not have to do all the sort of busy paperwork documentation that the old law was going to require. So it's things like that that are good. So in the end, none of the work is lost, and if anything, this is good, because where we got so far was as far as we really wanted to go based on our beliefs. And we were going to have to go potentially a little bit farther if things had stayed the same, to do some things that we might not have felt strongly about.
I think, you know, whatever our final decision on this, whatever direction we take, we've got to look at a strategy of communicate, how to communicate this to parents and to the school community.
So I know that it needs to be shared on our website and various other places. I plan to write a letter that will go out along with this document, and so that will all be done by the next meeting. But again, you know, we just had this conversation, I think it was like a week and a half or two weeks ago, and so this is as far as we've gotten so far, which is why I wanted to do this conversation in two parts.
Well, the communication with the parents was predicated on any particular stretch. I mean, we would need to communicate with them whether we were fully implementing performance-based or not.
Absolutely.
So hopefully, it's, it'll be part of our overall strategy, I guess.
The administrative team had started to put together the list of how it would look. We just had a, we needed to have this vision set and agreed upon by all the teachers first before we could determine how that was going to go out to parents.
Any questions for Katie at this point? I think she makes a good case that we need to, this is the first time we've seen this piece of paper, so it takes some time over the next month.
And I'll make sure it's also in the board packet again for next time, and so you have it there too.
We'll have it on the agenda next month.
Exactly.
So work in progress.
Work in progress, yes.
Well, then, I'll begin the next month for discussion.
Great.
Mr. Jim? The one thing that would concern me in terms of our relationship with our public has to do with the resources that we've extended, considerable amount in terms of effort in particular. And I think we need to demonstrate that that was not in vain.
Yes.
That we didn't throw the baby out with the bathwater, that the progress that we made in certain areas is being counted forward, even though we're not going to the full route.
That's a great point, and I can make sure that I highlight that in my letter, because not a dollar will have been wasted, because we're keeping all the work that we spent all the time. But I need to make sure that that's clear. That's a good point.
The chemistry, how the work, it has been very positive for the system.
I can do that. Thanks for the feedback.
Any other comments? No? Okay, thanks. Okay. Financial report, Katie, please.
Okay, so, can you hand it to us?
Oh, we haven't got, I don't know if the camera can shoot off.
All right. So tonight, we're going to, we actually have two financial reports to look at. So we're going to look at June, ending the year of 1718, and then the first month of July. But to focus on 1718, as you can see, we have a balance of $581,000, which is better than what we had hoped for. We're looking at probably $300,000 to $400,000, so this is a good thing. And basically, you can see the cost centers of, we pretty much stayed within every cost center, with the exception of special ed's overall, you know, somewhat, between the instruction and the tuition. But everything else was in line, a little bit over on co-curricula, but then the food service transfer, we made that $100,000 that we talked about last month into the food service program. So at this point, food service at the beginning of the year is in the negative $51,000, but with what we contribute every year, adding the additional $240,000, we should have a positive balance next, the end of next June, which is great.
This is a good proof.
Yeah, we have basically met the goal between transferring for two years over that $100,000, and then under Tim's leadership of bringing in more revenue, so we're in a good place there.
Where are the revenue? I mean, I know we can get rid of the deficit by putting, by paying it off essentially, but do we have revenue numbers?
I don't have them with me, but it was not, this year, there was not as much of a loss between the revenue and expenses as there has been in the past. So we gained there as well, you know, basically the net income, so we came out ahead. So I think we're headed in the right direction. I don't think that we will keep going in the negative from yet here, as long as we keep this amount of local contribution going through, you know, every year. So that's a good thing there. We had $51,000 extra in revenue from what we had budgeted, so overall, you know, it's a good thing. And it's interesting, because our auditors will be happy, because one thing that this does impact is when we do go out for financing, for things like the Moss High School, which that's, I'll touch on that at the end. July, the first month of July, we basically, we spent 5% of our budget. So things are just getting started here, and that's basically supplies and any salaries that have a July contract. Teacher salaries will start showing up in September, because we encumber everything in June, so our biggest expense is in June. So that's for July. Now, as far as Moss High School, we just closed on the $12.5 million second ban, so that's all set, headed to my checking account. And I met with Bath Savings this past week, and we're pulling out money to invest in, they call them, the Cedars. So it's a little bit more of an investment and more of a gain as far as just having it in the checking account, which is interest-bearing, but it's better interest. And so far, we've spent $3.3 million for the Moss High School project. I haven't received an invoice yet, but we'll be any day for the first invoice for purpose, so things will set up. Pick it up.
I mean, Dick Reddick's not here, obviously, but we had no trouble, he had no trouble marketing the notes.
No, no. We actually, I think we moved up one small notch as far as how we rate, you know, our bond ratings. So this is the second ban. The first one was 5.1, this is 12.5, and then the final one, we'll pay off those two when we have that final financing.
Any questions for?
Should we show it to your checking account?
Yeah. Okay. 9.0, old business. We are scratching, trying to go on. We have second reading of the policy, Jane, all of those. Item? Need to get on. We have a motion. I'll move to it, so. I mean, by a rule, second by... Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? New business.
10.1 is resignation of John Goslin, who's a health teacher here at Norwich at the middle school, one day a week. And he found a job that's, you know, a few more days a week for him, closer to home, so he has resigned. We do have a planned place. I think we'll be having an nomination for you pretty soon, which is, we're fortunate with one day a week. And 10.1B is just a Schedule B appointment. That's a FYI for you at your table tonight. And again, we bring that to you again, usually in January.
P, any questions? Okay, 10.2, we have several overnight field trips, which we can take them all in one vote if you want. We have a request, October 1st through the 4th, from Norwich Central School for Chawaki. Bath Middle School, 9/25 through 28, again, for referral, both of those are for referral, for Chawaki. BMS 9/18 through 9/21, and that is flow as well. Bath Middle School, 9/17 through 19, for the Ecology Beach School. That's a Bath Middle School request. We're doing a green crab expedition. We should support that for sure. A request, Morris High School request from Maria Morris, 10/16 to the 10/17 to Pine Tree Camp. And this is Leadership Education for Career Association Officers. These are the jobs for major activities, open, and that Maria has had. So we have those five requests. Do I have to take them all at once, or do you want to take them individually?
I would take them all at once. I would move to accept all. I would take them all at once, I would, I would move to accept all five requests.
Motion by Lou, second by Megan, can I issue to it? Any discussion on the requests? All in favor? Any o, no, thank you. And ten-point-three, pass this to Patrick, this is the, we have to give formal approval to the interlocal agreements for shared adult education management resources. Patrick discussed this with us before, and this is the agreement itself.
Yeah, so it's in the backup. Our attorneys worked with us and SED seventy-five to construct this, and so basically, we're not losing any services, we've talked about this before, and we're going to have a director, we're starting to offer our enrichment courses in the evening out of Morse High School, we're starting to offer our HSET, which is GDP testing for students, so nothing has really changed. All we're doing is entering agreements with SED seventy-five to, basically, we're paying them to have an employee run the program per year, and again, we're going to explore whether it makes sense for us to become part of Mary Meeting of Adult Education, which is SED seventy-five in Brunswick, but that'll give us a year to kind of study that and see if it makes sense to enter a collaboration where we would come out of that and run it.
This is our move into the wonderful world of collaboration.
Yeah, to some degree, it doesn't work though, I mean, if we come back and go to the top. Yeah, as we go through the budget process, oh, if we tell you that it's not gonna be a good fit, then we would go back and hire a director for RSU one, but if it is a good fit, then I think we would recommend going underneath Mary Meeting, having a site coordinator here, and again, we're building a new high school, we still will use, we never lose having our courses here in our community for adults and for students. So the three super heads signed it because as of August first, our former director had, you know, had retired, and so we needed to have somebody come along on this first, so we signed it, and we're just asking for, hopefully, your consideration approval this evening.
Okay, I think, I think the important thing here, and I think Patrick is certainly very sensitive to it, is that shifting the management and program, not, not put up any barriers for individuals to access these services here in Bath, and it seems that in planning this out, again, Patrick and the, the folks have been very sensitive to that, so the program should not appear any different to someone trying to access the service here in Bath. It's really the management that we should collaborate with, with the rest of the district. But we'll come back and revisit this in a year to make sure that that commitment has been, been reached, I should say. So, can I have a motion to approve the contract? Motion by Alan, second by Bill, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Reposed? Thank you. Okay, ten-point-four, we have the first reading of, or just student meal account, policy EFA.
That's what I'm trying to check.
Accounts, student meal accounts. Any comments? My, my, my only comment was that there are a couple of very soft, you don't want to call, I wouldn't call them benchmarks, but very soft standards in there. In the, in the one, two, three, fourth paragraph, it talks about recurring overages, and student accounts that experience repeated deficiencies will be referred to administrative personnel, so it doesn't, it doesn't quantify that in any way, and then in the fourth paragraph, it talks about student accounts that experience habitual overage in disregard for, well, disregard for realistic strategies, I can understand. So it, you know, there's really no clear measure of what constitutes a repeated deficiency, you know, habitual overage, and I just wonder, I can just see the conversation coming up, you know, that someone misses five, and someone misses four, and there's, there's a differential judgment made, if, did Tim make this?
He took a stab at it, and we'll come to, back to Policy Committee probably again, but this is a hard one because we do a lot of return receipts from eating, so we had this conversation as an ad team quite a bit, you know, sometimes you feel like somebody may be taking advantage of a situation, other times, there's something going on in their family life, or just, you know, don't get our, my school bucks to pay, and so it's difficult, and also the ages of the children come into play. So we're trying to work through this, we've had a lot of community support, we've had, you know, we've had some donations over the years that I've been here to help towards families when they have a deficient account, Tim spends an order of about time on the phone, trying to call is kind of the first step to remind them that they've got a balance over a certain amount, so we're just trying to develop a policy that, that we can live with. Right now, we have one that, you know, quite frankly, we don't feel like it's the right thing to do, so it's a tough one. You read it out in the papers, and other districts are facing the same dilemma, so Stephen made valid points, and we'll bring it back to the Policy Committee to keep, try to come up with something that will work.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the language, I mean, I think keeping it, I think it's the right word, you know, because it's, every situation's gonna be different, so you can't, that's part of why I started to take out some of the hard fast if it's three times or that we're in there before. So I don't have a problem with that. My own, I just had a question for clarification, because it's K to A students, what happens at the high school when there's an issue? I mean, how has that been, is it been of an issue, or is it because we have other things in place at the high school level, is that why? I'm just wondering why that language is there.
Well, if you, I mean, on that line there says charging meals by K to A students should not occur on a regular basis, and then it says, and is not allowed at the high school base.
Well, it's not allowed, so what I'm just saying is part of, you know, kids are hungry, they're still getting fed at the high school.
Yeah, and again, sometimes it's hard, because sometimes we have some monies available to help somebody out, and we have, you know, food available in other parks, food pantry at our high school, so again, we have the backpack programs a lot of our schools, so again, we don't want to see people go hungry, and I think Tim's challenge, or our challenge in this district is if we have that many, if we have too many students charging or us covering, then we go for
Yeah, no, that's fine, I was just wondering.
We should all take a harder stance at the high school because they're older, but it doesn't mean that if you made a substitute of the rate different than the regular meal we're serving, that we wouldn't do that for them.
Right, right, no, I understand. No, I think the language, I think the language is good, and I think this is more appropriate based on what, you know, food service folks are doing around the front line with the kids and how they're acting, and so I, you know, I think it's fine as is, and, you know, they're, you know, doing the best they can to to do what they can, yeah, give them the flexibility.
Well, I, I mean, I think we all want the same income. Frankly, I would prefer that we just gave the kid the deal than have to make a judgment of what constituted recurring from habitual. I, I'm not, I'm not arguing what, what our objective is here, I just, I would just, it would be too bad if we got into a dispute with parents or families that, that, you know, well, my child just was recurring overage, not habitual, you know what I mean?
More specificity?
What's that?
More specificity?
Well, if, if there's a way to choose some words that, that, now, I don't, I agree with you, I'm not sure, I mean, you want to modify this and say, well, you're gonna visit five times, but not six, but, but it is, it's just, it's just Yeah, I mean, maybe the Policy Committee can just, you know, take another look at it if it comes back, if it comes back this way.
Motion review that a certain
Yeah.
A certain point.
We'll, we'll consider, we'll consider what they come back with. Any other comments? On the polls? Okay, eleven-point-oh, public session, so this is the opportunity to talk about things that aren't on the agenda. Any comments, public comments?
Can I just ask a real quick question about the meals?
Would you, would you come up and?
It's so quick, is, does it, can I ask a question that has to do with my school bucks? Is that all put together?
This is your opportunity to ask any question.
I'm just curious, like, if I was a kid, if you guys could get rid of that? When you put money into a kids' counter, right?
I'm sorry, could you start, could you start?
I was just wondering, I mean, you talked about meals, and I just wanted to make, I just wanted to make sure that this is irrelevant, but my school bucks, right? Is how the parents pay for the meals, right? I mean, it just seems sort of antiquated to have a charge, like, I like to put twenty bucks, you know, because my kids, sometimes they like to go, really? I think it's like we have to go have a orange juice, you know, we have to regulate a little, but every time you put twenty dollars on, there's a charge of two-fifty. I mean, it's actually like a lunch or breakfast, so say every month you put twenty dollars, there's a charge of two-fifty. I mean, I know why, I mean, I'm buying something, and I
I could talk with Tim, and I could email you back a response, because I have children in SED seventy-five, and I do the same exact thing, I'm always a little worked, and it just comes out to be twenty-two ninety-four when I'm paying.
I agree, I agree completely.
So my assumption is, my assumption is it's a, it's a fee to the, you know, to the company for their service, but I've also talked about direct technology about, you know, in the future, of is it possible to do something different, and also, like, for example, laptop coverage, is there an easier way for people to use credit cards that don't have a fee? So I'll show you to it.
In the city of Bath, if you pay your water bill, right? There's a charge unless you use your bank account, right? If you use your debit card, then you are charged the three-fifty, but if you set it up where you, it's not an auto pay, but you use
Can you?
Yeah, you use that, then there's no charge, so if there was an up and a break, if it's not true.
Okay, I'll look into it. Thanks.
Makes sense.
Okay, so last item is twelve, twelve-point-oh, set the next meeting dates and locations for next scheduled board meeting is September seventeenth at Al Fisher Mitchell, so we're into that rotation at the beginning of the year, and I would like to just have a broader discussion because I think as, as board members are aware, you know, Jen has a regular conflict for the last Monday of, of every month. Patrick went over some dates which we can put out, some of, some of the dates will move off that Monday, that fixed Monday. I frankly prefer to hold the meetings on the same day of the month each time, I think it's, I think it's fairer to the public, and it's easier for me to stay able to, because I always know when I'm doing that Monday, but we're trying to accommodate Jen at least for, at least for a couple of months, so.
Will we accommodate her, sir?
Jen.
That's my first thought.
Yeah.
By all means.
So we're gonna, we'll get something out to you tomorrow, but we look at, from now until January, the babysitter, instead of the fourth Monday, and then I mean the third Monday, just because we're trying to accommodate.
I mean, presumably, all of them are going to be the fourth Monday, right?
Yeah, but I would be, some of the holidays, yeah.
So we got September seventeenth coming out, and October twenty-second, which I think would be a week later if we, you know, if it would be our normal fourteenth, but there are so much
Twenty-second, so it's working nice, yeah.
And then November twenty-sixth, so we'll get something out to you, and I'll meet with Jen tomorrow, we should be in our building, and we'll get something out to you and see if you have any concerns or objections.
Wouldn't it be easier to meet down to that Friday?
What's that?
No, we're not here on Friday.
Friday, how are you? No, you can't come on, guys.
I, I think, you know, I want to, I certainly want to be fair to Jennifer, but I also don't want to, I mean, it's, it's not to put an additional burden on any other board member, so if you have meetings or other commitments that affect the dates that Patrick is gonna send out to you, please, you know, please let us know, this is about making an accommodation for one member of the board to exclude other members. Okay, and then, and then hopefully, when we get to the beginning of the year, we're gonna be able to work this out, and again, my preference would be to go back to the last Monday of every, of every, of, okay, thank you very much for your cooperation. Okay, if there's no other business, take a motion.
Here you go, Mr. Blue. I move a term.
I second.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion from Bill, second by Megan. Jason was a little bit upset that we were meeting here this night.
I said I would like to have one during the school year, when the school year runs, I'd like to hold
Got it, that's all right.
All right.
He does welcome us visiting the school at any time, at, at every opportunity, so. Okay, all in favor of adjournment? Any opposed? Any bringing on you two?